I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Could we have a roll call, Desiree, please?
Sure. Mayor Sigada.
Present.
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Believers? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and those that are joining us online. All city offices will be closed on Good Friday, April 2nd, 2021. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, April 13th, 2021, 6:00 p.m., right here in the chambers. Item five, committee reports from commissioners. Commissioner Chatterley.
Okay. The New Mexico Municipal League Board of Directors met March 4th. We had a legislative update, an administrative update. We went into executive session regarding the fiscal year 2122 budget. And after that session, there was a vote regarding scheduled furloughs that passed. And that's pretty much all I had to report on that meeting. Mayor Sigada was there as well. If you have anything to add.
That's pretty much it.
On behalf of the Outdoor Recreation Task Force, I attended the New Mexico Outdoor Division Zoom presentation on the Outdoor Recreation Roundtable Rural Economic Development Toolkit on March 5th. We were given a tour of this 117-page document. It includes 15 best practices to develop rural outdoor recreation economies with real-life examples and ideas from around the United States. And I believe we were the first state to meet and go over the toolkit with the group. It also discusses common challenges for rural communities in the process. The toolkit contains links to federal grants and technical assistance. Anyone can access the toolkit on the recreationroundtable.org website homepage. It is in a class-style format where you can interact and change pages. There's videos and links. You can also download a PDF hard copy if you want one. And I do plan to attend the Fisher's Peak State Park Master Plan Interest Group Discussion for New Mexico stakeholders, and that's Zoom on Monday, April 5th, at 9:30 a.m. I was unable to attend the Lodger's Tax Meeting on March 17th, but I did go through that new handbook, the Best Practices Handbook, and I thought it was very instructive, especially their suggestions regarding the development of a strategic process for fund usage and the actual best practices that they listed were good. The Colfax County Senior Citizens Board did not meet, and North Central New Mexico Economic Development District meets again on April 23rd. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacomo.
Okay. The Arthur Johnson Memorial Library Advisory Board met meeting with Alan March 16th, 2021, 5:30 p.m. Because of the COVID-19 requirements, the library was shut down and then put on limited patron basis, and reopened Tuesday, February 16th, for two access for 10 people at a time. The balance in the state, the balance of the state grant denied in the amount of $8,145 was received, along with a one-time supplemental IMLS CARES Act payment of $2,107.13. The period of closure, during the period of closure, they implemented a curb-type service in December, January, and half of February for checkouts and also handing out tax forms. Statistical report for month of January 2021, due to the period of shutdown, no money was collected and no progress out. Statistical report for month of February 2021, donations collected was $10,049.50. This goes back to the grant and the CARES Act payment. Funds collected was $66.65. Copies made was $115, and memorials received was $30. Raton Public Service Company Board of Directors meeting with Alan Wednesday, February 24th, 2021, 5:30 p.m. Robin Osborne, RPS Office Manager, bookkeeper presented to and approved by the board the financial statistical information. RPS Board President Kathy McQuarrie reviewed with the Board Resolution 2021-3, New Mexico House Bill 137, of which the RPS Board is in opposition to. RPS General Manager David Pazzino covered work activities being performed by the crew this month. And also, election, election was held for RPS officers for the year 2021. Positions feelers followed. Kathy McQuarrie, President. Martin McGowan, Vice President. David Swanson, Treasurer. Robin Osborne, Secretary. Frank Berry will move into the advisory position. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Chavez.
I do. Mayor Protem Schuster and myself attended the Water Board meeting on March 16th. Lake Malloy is currently two feet below spillway, and slowly it's spilling up. They operate many on the Simonton system right now. The Third Street project and the lift station projects are complete now, and I believe that the Ponyo repiping system going across Ponyo Creek is completed. They had a few problems, and we approved financial reports for the Raton Water Board. The Financial Advisory Committee met on March 18th, approved a February financial report to be presented tonight to the City Commission. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Mayor Protem Schuster.
The Center for Community Innovation has not formally met, however. They have been busy on getting things ready to reopen the Visitor's Center, which target date for that is June 1st. There are efforts going on right now in organizing and cleaning. The Visitor's Guide is scheduled to go to press early in May. They're working on the Supercross, and that effort is coming together nicely. There's a lot of support from the community. Later this week, Jeff Peterson will meet with Mr. Berry regarding funding options for the workforce plan that's moving forward, and that's a, working with high school kids and companies to provide work experience. It's a good program. That's all I have.
Thank you. Myself, I attended the Lodger's Tax Board meeting, talked about events being planned for the summer. We're anticipating at least a little freedom. We'll see what happens. As Mayor Protem mentioned, the Visitor's Guide is scheduled to come out sometime in May, they hope, and as well as the VIC opening up in June. Yesterday was the mayor's task force meeting with the staff of the governor's office. We discussed House Bill 4, how we all expressed that that was probably not favorable for communities. It was probably going to cost communities money. But we did then bring up House Bill 375, and even the governor's chief of staff was appreciative that we put that, that the league had put that together, that it got through because it does promise reform where it needs to be done. Attorney General is behind that, as well as the Department of Safety Secretary, Mr. Johnson, and the state police chief is adamantly for this, so that was good. We then talked about, everybody, you know, why aren't we in green yet? Dr. Strace came on and gave us some of the gating criteria. He did say that it looks like everyone, except for maybe four counties, are well under the positivity rate of 5%. In fact, he said there were a couple of counties that are very near 1%, so that's good. But the one that is holding everybody up is the cases per 100,000 per capita. Colfax County, with the last testing, we were at 9.6. We need to be under eight before we can go to green. Your numbers come out tomorrow. We'll see where we're at. Other than that, that was it. Anything else? All right. Items from citizens present. Anyone wishing to address the board? Okay, item 7A, approval of March 9th, 2021, regular commission meeting minutes. Should have had a chance to look at those.
I'll make the motion to approve the March 9th, 2021, regular minutes.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve the March 9th, 2021, regular commission meeting minutes. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, deliberate and act on an agreement between the City of Raton and Bird Rides Inc. for stand-up electric scooters. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet you have a memorandum of understanding between the City of Raton and Bird Rides, Inc. I will read the first line to you here. The City of Raton will permit Bird Rides, Inc. to provide services under the following terms and limitations. The agreement shall remain in effect until September 31st, 2023, unless terminated as set forth below. I have talked to this company, and specifically a gentleman named Mike Butler, for several months. Mr. Butler addressed the commission a couple of meetings ago in regard to this request, and I bring the memorandum of understanding to you tonight for your consideration. While we're talking about this, I'm going to ask Mr. Phillips to come up, and I'm not entirely sure that Mr. Butler will be on the phone. We gave him the opportunity to be present to bring forth any additional information or allow the commission to ask questions. However, I'm not sure if he is calling in. We really didn't get confirmation of that. Back to the MOU, it simply allows Bird Ride Inc.'s to place a minimum of 50 electric scooters in Raton. Generally, the agreement says that you could operate an electric scooter.
Please go to your participant or moderate input, followed by the pound key.
That you could be legal to do so in this jurisdiction. Excuse me. And they would follow.
Please say your name, followed by the pound key.
Raton City Commission.
You are the first participant in the conference.
So we probably don't have Mr. Butler on there. Anything you can do with that?
You can turn it down, and if you hear him talk, I'll turn it back.
All right. Is that okay with you, Marty? All right. So generally, we would allow the scooters to operate in Raton. They would have to follow whatever rules we have in our local jurisdiction. As they change from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, they don't really specify that in the agreement. The terms are they would follow that. As Mr. Butler said last time, their going forward with the plan would be contingent upon finding a local partner, an operational partner that would be a for-profit business in Raton. And so we would anticipate that step. They have not identified that partner. The agreement talks about indemnification, and something I've done in the meantime is I did call the New Mexico Self Insurers Fund. They would cover our tort liability in general cases. They did review this and gave me some response over the phone. Generally, tort liability on this would not be significantly different than most other situations that we would face. If there's a situation where the city is found to be negligent, we would have some exposure, and of course, we would be covered by our risk management, the Self Insurers Fund. Now, in fairness, I talked to Kathy Hennessy at the fund, and she did point out a number of the issues with these electric scooters that you all have discussed or heard before or brought up yourselves, and that it's typical that someone would ride it for a ways and then just leave it in the middle of a sidewalk or a place where maybe you don't want it. They can, they really can't operate on the sidewalk here, but if you put them in the street where we may not have a bike lane, specifically in Second Street, there's a risk with that. So I think you all can appreciate some of the risks that go with it, some of the issues that other cities have had with these. That was pointed out by Ms. Hennessy at the fund, and I told her that I would pass that along to all of you, although I think you're well aware of that potential. The term of the agreement, I came up with that date, September 31st, 2023, allows the operation for three summers in Raton, and then at the conclusion of the third summer, the MOU would terminate, and you all would be talking about that again with the company as far as going forward. So that's basically the terms. I'll answer any questions that you might have. Jason, I think clearly Mr. Butler is not going to join us on the phone, but I think you did hear from Mr. Butler previously.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Berry?
I just want to make a note that the date should probably be September 30th instead of the 31st.
Whoops.
I was in my head doing my little rhyme, and yeah. 30 days. And to also point out to the public that if this does pass, that there is, they include a toll-free phone number and email address on the scooter, so there's a way for people to report issues or relocation requests on the scooters.
And Mr. Butler addressed at the last meeting, because what I was concerned about is that he would have, whoever rents a scooter would have to sign an affidavit exempting us, you know, liability, and so.
And I think, I think, Commissioner, you would generally do this digitally and, you know, use a phone, and I think there's probably a lengthy agreement there, whether you, you know, and I think by going forward, you acknowledge that for what that's worth.
You have to accept that.
You never read it, but you're just going to accept it.
Also, I think clause number 11 is good, too, you know, that we have a termination within 30 days if there are any major problems, so there's clawbacks and things if it becomes some kind of issue for us.
Has this been presented to Mr. Butler already, did you say?
It has, yes.
Good with it?
Is he going to be the one that signs up or finds a vendor for the situation?
Yes, they would, Bird Rides would then complete their due diligence, and that would include finding the local partner, the local vendor for that. If they ask us for any services, I'm sure like we would with other business development ideas, we would do what we can to assist, but they will go forward with their due diligence.
I was telling Marty, I saw that there's like 500 of them in the greater Denver area already, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments? Any other thing to motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the. I'll make the. You got it.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the City of Raton and Bird Rides, Inc. for stand-up electric scooter.
A second.
We have motion and a second to approve the MOU between the City of Raton and Bird Rides, Inc. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, deliberate and act on Park Hill, Smith, and Cooper proposal for groundwater monitoring.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is related to the reclaimed landfill that's located on Armstrong Lane. I do have the Public Works Director here, Jason Phillips. He will give you the specifics on this proposal and answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Urban Commissioner. The name has changed, but the firm is identical to what we've written in the past. Park Hill, Smith, and Cooper has absorbed Gorn Environmental, and for a while, they operated with the hyphen, but now they're just Park Hill, Smith, and Cooper. The amount of this proposal is the identical amount to last year, $28,900 excluding NMGRT, and we are in year five of a 30-year close closer window, so it won't be the last one of these you've seen. I would recommend approval of this proposal, but would like to share with you the fact that we have reached out to Mr. Craypow about the possibility of city staff, my own, and myself taking on some of the sampling duties and looking for a possible rebate on some of the risks that are associated with it. We haven't been able to connect prior to this, and we do have our first sampling event that's required to take place in the next month, so I hate to hold it on the table depending that. Worst-case scenario, it'll be the $28,900 that we paid last year. Best-case scenario, we get a little reduction.
And so just in short, we would, we would sample the groundwater at the landfill location. Testing would be a part of the contract. That's testing for a long list of constituents, but we're looking specifically for pollutants that potentially would be linked with the landfill. We have a long history of this and no contamination related to the landfill. And as Jason said, we would do this for the long term, and we report the results to the New Mexico Environment Department. And so that's the deadline that Jason had mentioned, is a requirement to report to them.
Very good. I will move to approve the agreement between Parker and Smith and Cooper for groundwater
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement between Park Hills, Smith, and Cooper for groundwater monitoring. Is there any further discussions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jason. Item D, deliberate and act on library board appointments.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet you have two applications to the library board. You have an application from Janice Schumpert and Dee Burks, and I did have excellent question for the meeting that I did not have an answer to, so.
I have the answer to that.
You have the answer to it?
I have the answer to that. So Ms. Schumpert is up for renewal.
Reappointment.
Reappointment, and Dee Burks is applying to fill the position that is vacant.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
So I think they're both good candidates for the position. They have working knowledge of libraries and books, so I would move to approve.
A second now. Motion and a second to approve both candidates for the library board. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, deliberate and act on Lodger's Tax Advisory Board recommendations.
Mr. Berry. Mayor and Commissioner, as you had mentioned, Mayor, the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board did meet, and they are forwarding recommendation to the commission for your consideration. They met on March 17th, by the way, and I'll read the recommendation. The Lodger's Tax Board is recommending to the commission that $2,000 be given to the Center for Community Innovation for the distribution cost of the Raton Visitor's Guide by a subcontractor, Fun and Games of Rio Rancho, New Mexico, to visitor centers throughout New Mexico, and for shipping guides from the Visitor's Information Center directly to visitor centers and other tourism locations in New Mexico, Colorado, Texas, and Kansas. This would be funded out of the print advertisement line item.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Berry?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation from the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board.
A second. Motion and a second to approve the recommendation from the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate and act on introduction of vacant building registration ordinance. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, we've talked about the vacant building registration ordinance for some time now. We did discuss it at a city commission meeting back in 2020, and at that time, we stated that we would ask for review from legal counsel on the ordinance. That is complete. We did have the review completed by Susan Carey. Ms. Carey did give us some of her recommendations on the ordinance, and I have incorporated those recommendations in the version that you have in your packet here tonight, generally. So the one issue that Susan brought up, she asked, she didn't really recommend, but she asked, and is some local ordinances have a requirement for a local resident agent when the building owner is not in Raton? Not all ordinances have that. That accomplishes some things for you in that you have a local contact. However, the way that the Raton vacant building ordinance reads, I don't think that the resident agent is necessary, and I have not included it in this copy. Ms. Carey did also ask us if we would have an insurance requirement for a vacant building. I did incorporate that into this draft, which is something that we did not have at the last, at the last discussion of the ordinance, and I incorporated her other changes into this. Now, this would be an introduction tonight. The action by the commission would be to introduce this, set up a public hearing. There are notification requirements for the public hearing, so I would say, and I'll look over at Michael Ann, that we would hold that at the second meeting in April, and the commission could take action on the ordinance at that meeting in April. I don't have the date for you, but I think it's the 27th of April. Is that correct? Sound right to you? So generally, let's talk about the content of this ordinance. If a property owner, and that can consist of an individual, a company, a financial institution, any type of owner, has a vacant building in Raton, they would be required to register the building with the City of Raton, and there would be a fee that went along with that. Now, we've included an ascending fee, meaning that the first year, you would have a certain rate, and then that rate would go up in the second year, third year, fourth year, and fifth year, and then it would be capped thereafter at that fifth-year amount. So you see the fees. Let me flip back in the ordinance. You see the fees listed on the second to last page. I don't have these numbered, but we did have a discussion when we talked about it, about the amount of the fees. And based on that discussion, I did raise these amounts. And in regard to the fees, you see an amount for less than 10,000 square feet, and then you see a much higher amount for a building that's greater than 10,000 square feet. So some of the really large buildings that we have, the rationale is that they have a greater impact on the community, and therefore, that's reflected in a higher fee, and you see that that accelerates up. So less than 10,000 square feet, the first year registration fee would be $100, but by year five, it would be $1,000. And that's in recognition that we would like vacant building owners to do something to resolve that. Sell the building, demo the building, rent the building out, give it away, whatever that takes. And then you see fees from $250 graduating up to $2,500 in year five for a building that's greater than 10,000 square feet, and that's an acknowledgement that those big buildings have a greater impact on the community. Now, this, this ordinance is brought to you in acknowledgement that we have a lot of vacant buildings in Raton, and we have a lot of buildings that are dilapidated, that are unsafe, that are partially burnt or dismantled, and those cause harm to the community. And a lot of those buildings are owned by owners who are not in Raton and really don't take responsibility for the upkeep of that property, and that's having a very negative impact on Raton and our efforts at economic development or community redevelopment. And so the ordinance is put forth to the commission here tonight to try to encourage those property owners to take responsibility for their property and reminding them annually that they have that responsibility. As well with this, I've told the commission that we would plan on doing something that Raton has not done before, and that is assigning a full-time staff member to enforcement of not only the vacant building ordinance, but the nuisance ordinance and the dangerous building ordinance. Now, under those, we have what may be included in a vacant building ordinance in other cities. You have requirements to abate those nuisances or a dangerous building. So we have pretty good ordinances already on the books in regard to that, and that's not included in the vacant building ordinance. But there is some enforcement if a party did not register the building or if they failed. failed to submit the insurance that is prescribed in this, or otherwise failed to meet the requirements of the vacant building ordinance. So those are three tools that we'll have for the general cleanup of the city. And I would, upon your consideration and action on the vacant building ordinance, post the position of that staff member for full-time enforcement. Let me hold up there, and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Berry. This is, as we said, an introduction. Any questions at this time for Mr. Berry? I would just encourage anyone out there listening to that, if you have a vacant building and you have any questions regarding this, please contact us.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to introduce the vacant building registration ordinance.
Hold second. We have a motion and a second to introduce vacant building registration ordinance. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item G, deliberate and act on Resolution 2021-22, authorizing the purchase of a used roll-off truck from South Central Solid Waste Authority. Mr. Berry or Mr. Phillips?
Mayor and Commission, we are talking about a piece of equipment to be used in our solid waste system here. Jason Phillips, Public Works Director, has been working on this for a while, and he will answer any questions or give you the specifics on this proposal.
So our new transportation, this new construction requires a roll-off truck to jockey containers about. We still use a third-party contract to haul those. They are pretty expensive pieces of equipment, and as you all are aware, purchasing a used piece of equipment by the city is pretty difficult to do. You have to go through a like-new bid process and then get a warranty. And in the price range we were looking at, that was going to be difficult. So we've scoured the state looking for someone that may have one of these trucks that they were surplusing, and we were anticipating spending up $20,000 or more for a basic truck to do what we needed. But luckily, the fine folks at the Solid, or South Central Solid Waste Authority down in Las Cruces let us know that they were surplusing a 2002 International Model 2674 roll-off truck, and that they'd be willing to sell that to us on a government-to-government transfer for the sum of $5,000. Needless to say, we were come excited, and I would be honored if you would add this 2002 International to our fleet. It won't be the oldest piece of equipment we have, but it will be the only roll-off truck we have. Be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any. Our staff has traveled to Las Cruces to look at the vehicle. Obviously, in this price range, it's going to need a little TLC to be roadworthy enough for our needs, but we would plan to have it transported home and have Kevin Garcia and the Public Workshop do some retrofit work to it to get it safe and operational and be good enough for our needs.
All right, any questions for Mr. Phillips?
He answered mine.
Well, it's the bargain shopping.
Yeah.
Will it make it up here?
They actually thought that it would be safe to drive it home, and we're still considering it, but until we get a chance to go through it, I would almost feel better if we could transport it. But it's been difficult finding someone that can haul one from Las Cruces to Rattone. We may have to send a mechanic to the truck and ginger to bring it home.
I will move to approve Resolution Number 2121-22, authorizing the purchase of a used roll-off truck from South Central Solid Waste Authority.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2021-22. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Item H, deliberate and act on Resolution 2021-23, approval of February 2021 financial report. Michael Ann.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. In your packet this evening is our financial report. I do not have the normal page that I put in there, Gray, that's kind of the summary of all of the balances and the grocery receipts tax comparison. This was the first month that the tax and revenue started to phase in the changes related to the deep earmarking of the grocery receipts, so it kind of changed the appearance of my report. I'm going to have to change the formulas in my spreadsheet and make sure that everything is broken up correctly, because we do distribute our grocery receipts amongst a lot of various funds. So I'm still working on that, but I did take a look at our comparison sheet from last month. And so, our distribution this month was 281,189.46. The check that we received last year in the month of March was 311,000. So that is a little bit less, but we have to take into consideration that we still did have the filter plant project that was going on this time of year. So I will get that updated, and at the next meeting presents you with the updated comparison report on grocery receipts. But if we look at the audited financial statements that I've put in your packet, you'll see that your ending cash balance in the general fund as of February 28th is $3,343,525. And then you can see the summary of the balances in the various funds that we have. I did find out today that the money that we're waiting on for the police cars, that should be processed in the next day or two. So that was our legislative capital outlay for purchase of the new police cars. So I did reach out to DFA, and evidently, there's just a little bit of a backlog on those types of reimbursements, but I'm glad to hear that, that we'll have it before the third quarter. So other than that, not a lot of grant activity. We did receive the $50,000 for the completion of the comprehensive plan, which we brought to you at the last meeting. So the closing on that was March 19th, which was Friday, when the funds were wired to our accounts. So we have received those funds, and we have closed that out. Also in your packet, I gave you the gas tax comparison spreadsheet. I did not put the lodgers tax one in, because as of this week, we were still collecting some of the lodgers tax. But you'll see for the end of the third quarter, year-to-date, we're down about 10.8% compared to last year, but last year was kind of an unusually high year for us. So I do anticipate that probably now that we're seeing some spring break travel and as things are starting to open up in New Mexico and other states, I think we're going to see a lot of travel. I anticipate that the gas tax will continue to increase going into this final quarter of the fiscal year. We also do have in your packet, we did receive the small cities assistance distribution, and so we always get that right after the legislative session ends. Unfortunately, it was $206,433. We didn't anticipate that it would have been a decline this year, just given the state of the economy and kind of oil and gas, a lot of highs and lows this past year with the oil and gas industry. So we did budget 350,000, so this is about 140,000 less than what we had budgeted. So as I had reported to you before, you know, we were going to kind of wait to see how much this check came in, and then we'll try to meet with department heads, kind of see if we can delay some expenses till the next fiscal year. But overall, our general fund operating budget, you know, it's operating well below budget, so we also have some savings there. Like I reported the last time, some of that savings is salary savings due to some vacant positions, but we'll try to balance the budget as best as we can this year. One other thing I wanted to bring up too, and I didn't put it in your packet, but I did send out notices to our local restaurants, bars, breweries, those that I had emailed us, where tax and revenue did announce on March 11th that they did pass Senate Bill 1. And that particular bill allows these restaurants, bars, breweries, and similar businesses, with the exception of fast food, they are not eligible. But they, starting March 1st to July 1, this bill provides tax relief that's intended to help businesses that have been hard hit financially by the COVID. So during that four-month period, the deduction is available to these eligible businesses. And so, they can either choose to not charge the grocery receipts tax on deductible receipts or to charge the tax and keep the amount charged just for that four-month period. So the question did come up, you know, how is that going to affect our distribution? So I did school the legislation, and we took a look at it. And so, tax and rev also put provisions in there where they would still basically hold us harmless, like they do with the food and medical, and that they would still distribute our local option grocery receipts for the increments that we would pose, and then we would still get the 1.225 of the state portion that we always get. So, you know, they're going to make us whole, so that shouldn't have any impact on us. But it is just some additional tax relief for these hard-hit businesses. So if there's anybody out there listening that would like some additional information, they can just call me, and I can share the information that I have. Very many questions on the financial report.
Motion to approve Resolution 20-21-23, approval of February 2021 financial report. I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2021-23, February financial report. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item I, deliberate and act on Resolution 2021-24, budget adjustment number 10, fiscal year 21. Michael Ann.
Hi, Mayor and Commission, in your packet, we do have a short budget adjustment. You'll recall at a previous meeting, we did approve the bid for the LED lighting project. And so, that bid plus the GRT is bid to $1,185. And so, the arrangement that we have is that the city will pay the contractor, and then RPS has agreed to pay 50%, water 25, and the city the other 25. So I'll collect from them after we've paid the contractor to perform the work. So they've already completed RPS, and I believe they might be starting on our building next week.
Cool.
So we're moving along with that project. Also, the city manager is going to be starting another project, that's the Whittier Byron MAP project. You'll recall that we did not approve those agreements until sometime in the fall, so I just need to budget that since it wasn't in the initial budget that we did for the year. So you'll see that the match is 75,000. That's what we agreed to, and then the project, total project cost was estimated at 75,000. And of course, the match is coming out for our test.
Any questions for Michael Ann?
I'll make a motion to approve budget adjustment, sorry, Resolution 2021-24, budget adjustment number 10, fiscal year 21. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 2021-24, fiscal year 21, budget adjustment number 10. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. Item J, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have submitted a letter of support on behalf of the city of Rattone for a funding application that was submitted to USDA for the Rural Community Development Initiative. The application is for technical assistance for affordable workforce housing, affordable and workforce housing, and is being submitted by the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District. So I am supporting their efforts in that, and if we have success, I'll report back to the commission on that. I'll inform the commission and the public that the Northeast Regional Transportation Planning Organization meeting will be held tomorrow. It's by video conference, and it will start at 10:00 a.m. Myself and Jason Phillips will be present. I have submitted preliminary notification that we intend to apply for funding for the East 10th Street Frontage Road project and also the Sugar Reed Avenue Highway 72 project through the Transportation Planning Fund. That begins at the Regional Planning Organization and goes through that process. So I think that now that the legislature is wrapped up, we will be talking about that. I think we'll talk about that tomorrow with NMDOT personnel. And then also, talking about NMDOT, the New Mexico Transportation Commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday morning at 9:00 a.m. Because this technically, even though it's by video conferences, technically would be normally held in District 4, and so it's focusing on District 4. Myself and the mayor will be present to provide some comments from District 4 officials. And I think we'll be focusing our comments on the Interstate 27 idea improvements on I-25 Rattone Pass, and then this issue we have ongoing at I-25 and the Clayton Highway. And so, if you saw that area this weekend, there's still a lot of traffic congestion on a busy weekend, but I know that the planning for those improvements are ongoing. And so, it's going to be some years until we see the improvements constructed, but the DOT is, in my opinion, doing the right thing, and they're going through the engineering, planning, and the engineering process currently. And then lastly, Mayor, the project that we've talked about for some time at the airport, the PAPI, the Precision Approach Plane Indicator Equipment, that project is currently under construction. I would estimate that we'll have that completed around May 1st, and I'll report back to you on that. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Very nice. Any other business come before? Mr. Chavering?
I have nothing.
Mr. Jacomo?
Nothing.
Mr. Chavis?
Yes.
Yes, all right.
Last week, the city manager, Desiree, and Jason took myself, and they took us over to view the new lighting at the RPS. It is really an improvement. It really is, and it's going to save us a lot of money in the modeling, so they've done a good job.
Cool.
Thanks for taking me, you guys.
Thank you, Commissioner. We will begin in City Hall, as Michael Ann said, next week. Makes a big difference to the building, to the folks working there, but energy efficiency is another big byproduct of that project, so that's going on now.
Very good.
Mayor Prodim?
Yep.
All right. I would just comment that Mr. Berry and myself met with Jason and an electrician out at the old Arberry Brewery, new brewery location, and they're talking about some electrical needs, and pretty excited what's going on out there, so looking forward to that, and hopefully, we can work things out to where it gets to go. Other than that, that's all I have. Seeing you all in business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.